Good evening, thank you, and I welcome you to the City of Montgomery City Council Meeting. We're here to discuss city business this evening. I would like to ask that you put your phones on silent or turn them off during this meeting so that we ensure everyone can be heard. Hefat calling this to order is exactly 6 o'clock PM. We'll begin this meeting with an education given by Byron Sanford.
Heavenly Father, we ask your presence to be with us today. Give us wisdom and guidance. We ask your blessings to continue to be upon this city, upon our officials, our workers, our families, our institutions. Just bless us abundantly, give us wisdom and discernment. We give you the glory and the praise in advance in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the United States flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas One state under God, one indivisible.
Ms. Hensley, I'd like to note that TJ Wilkerson is not in attendance, but we do have a call. The next item on your agenda is the visitor of citizens' world, and this evening we do have Mr. Floyd Montgomery of Montgomery, Texas, and he is going to be speaking on behalf of the Montgomery Museum. Mr. Montgomery, would you please head to the podium right there so that you could be heard for our online audience? Thank you.
This is first responders of Montgomery, Texas. I have collected over 2,000 Montgomery letters over the last 35 years. I'm a Montgomery museum visitor in Montgomery, Texas, I'm down this year. I moved out from Illinois almost three years ago this month. And I'm in the process of putting my collection of two bedrooms at my house, and until I get a more permanent location hopefully downtown Montgomery, then people can come up to my house and have a look. They won't be ready for about two weeks. I had a dogma here from the Republic of Texas in 1843, was Houston, Texas, Martha, and Montgomery in Surry. So if they want to be available on eBay, check their last name on eBay and see what pops up. I've been collecting Montgomery letters for over 35 years, but most of all I have is all eBay in the last 12 years. I have it signed by General Richard Montgomery, who was the first American general killed in the revolution, and I have signed it full marks on the government world on eBay. His grandfather Robert Montgomery was in the 1850s, and he's along responsible for moving the monument there. And I have one more interesting address. It's written by James Montgomery, first governor of San Antonio, it was called in 1791. He's writing to a friend about the escape of the King of France from Paris. Have you ever heard of the French Revolution?
Yeah.
Have you heard of the guilty?
Yeah.
He didn't say that's gay or at all.
[laughing]
I just said I hope I have a museum here in Montgomery, so I'm not sure, but I need free space because I don't have mine of rent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Item number one, matters related to the approval of the May 25th, 2021 regular meeting minutes. Number two, accept resignation of Carrie Mae, her place two on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and begin application process for replacement and appointment of that position. Counsel, you can take these cumulatively or independently. What is your pleasure?
I'm going to take them together.
Together's good. Second? It has been moved and seconded that we take these action items together. This motion's debatable, amendable, and requires majority vote. It is open for discussion.
Richard, what's the process for replacement?
The ability for advice about planning and zoning is certainly, once we have the resignation accepted, if this action is accepted, we will post it. We'll post it online.
30 days.
We'll accept the resident vote, accept the application processes through the City Secretary's office through July 7th, after which the city staff will review it to make sure that the applicants meet the qualifying standards. All those that meet the qualifying standards will be presented to the City Council, to the City Council to make the proper little choice on that. But we'll also, we'll post that with the next water utility bill that goes out, and on the electronic side to try to maximize our ability to make that accessible to the public for knowledge on that.
I did really read it. I just wanted to make sure that the public and online know that we're accepting applications.
I was going to mention that towards the end of the meeting with the announcements, but thank you for asking this, to stay with that.
Counsel, you ready for the question?
Yes, ma'am.
All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the consent agenda as presented. Consideration of possible action, item number three, receive a presentation on the annual service and assessment plan for the City of Montgomery, Public Improvement District Number One. We have Mallory Craig here.
Hello, hi, council. I attend your meeting annually to present a update to your service assessment plan. Usually I do this in August, however, the county asks for me to submit the assessment role information to them by the end of June, so I figured we might as well come in June and go ahead and get this set up and submit it to the county. So I have prepared for you a memo about the service assessment plan, the establishment of the Public Improvement District, and kind of the process we go through each year. Last year we levied the assessment. A portion of that was deducted for administrative costs, which was $450. I prepared the assessment. I worked with the developer to make sure that everything that has been triggered is noted and verified with the county as online. And then, once you guys adopt the updated service and assessment plan, and the assessments are paid, we then submit a dispersment request for the dispersment to back to the developer for those assessments to reimburse for the cost that the Pid approved. You guys have already approved the dispersment from the 2020 collection, so next year in March of 2022, we will come back to with a request for the dispersment of the 2021 assessments. So that is the presentation I have on your yearly steps of adopting your service and assessment plan and how we go about reimbursement. Are there any questions about that item that I can answer or provide any information about? That's it for that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Easy enough?
Yeah.
Item number four on your agenda, consideration of possible action regarding adoption of the following ordinance. An ordinance at the City Council of the City of Montgomery, accepting and approving an annual update to the service and assessment plan and assessment role for City of Montgomery, Public Improvement District Number One, providing a payment of the annual installment of the assessments in accordance with Chapter 372, Texas Local Government Code, as amended and provided for severability and providing an effective date.
Right. Move that we adopt the ordinance as presented?
Well, seconded. It has been moved and seconded that we accept the ordinance as presented. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the ordinance as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the ordinance as presented. Item number six on your agenda, consideration of possible action regarding an amendment to the encroachment and maintenance agreement between the City of Montgomery and First Hartford Realty Corporation for Monument signage at the Shops of Montgomery.
In September 2020, the city approved an encroachment and maintenance agreement with developer for shops of Montgomery. This agreement allows for the developer to build monument signs on their property. They're taking that in 105 and Ebus Street. With this city utilities can go on the front of their property, the purpose of that agreement is to, you know, has two reasons. One, provides the city approval for signs to be built into the easements as long as the signs do not conflict with the utilities of the city. And the developer agrees to hold the city harmless if the signs are ever damaged or reduced to force to work on the city facilities. The 2020 agreement includes four signs. The developer is requesting to add five signs to the agreement and completing all the documents, or all the developer signage. The agreement form is a standard form that is used previously devised by the city. All five of the new proposed signs will still require permitting and inspections by the city. The contractor will be water checking the foundations to prevent damage to utilities. The city engineer has included a memo recommending approval of additional park plans being submitted in coordination with public works for installation and permitting with the city. And the city attorney has also reviewed the agreement as an objection, staff as an objection for evidence approval. The only thing they'll add is the city does have a general ordinance on how far signs must be spaced apart. The total of the nine signs that this would total with the three five as existing for, that's actually less signs than they could have if they just went by the annual distance along the front of the property.
It's a lot of signs in a short little area.
Yeah. So we're talking nine altogether?
Yes. But as I said, that is less than it could ultimately have been if they just went on the minimum spacing.
I hear a lot of our residents saying, we don't want to look like other places that have sign after sign and highly commercial, and it looks like a lot of signs.
So we're talking about nine individual signs, or like a pile of things with?
Nine monumental signs.
They're on the ground. That's the code's on the ground, like the Chick-fil-A one.
Or like the one over here, the insurance company.
Gotcha.
There's already four there. Well, there's four already approved. We're only approving five others.
And why do you want us to recommend we go ahead and approve this now?
I'm sorry?
Why do you recommend we go ahead and approve this?
That we can have, or recommending approval so it can be all set in place before construction is all there at once, rather than having to come one at a time.
If we don't approve it, then what happens?
What the?
Do they, can they come back and say, okay, instead of five, we'll ask for four? Or they do a completely different, they do one large sign that has all of that block, if you will, all the signage in one spot?
I prefer asking that question to someone who's more familiar with ordinances than me, which is our, you know, director of development planning and systems, and he can explain this stuff.
[laughing]
I recommend you correct him.
It's a long name, too.
Mr. Montgomery.
Listen to your question though. What happens is if you don't approve it, if they want to change their sign, then they can move those back out of the easement and not have to come to the city or anything except the permit. Just a quick check as we were getting this idea when I prepared it. Sixteen is the number of signs that are ordered for allow, just on one of those.
Sounds like we need to revise that ordinance. Stop. I'm like, nine seems like a great concession right now, Walkman.
Yeah.
So because we have, you know, for every hundred and one five feet of street product.
Is that typical ordinance, Alan, that small towns have, or is it like 500 feet?
You know, it varies, but that's a lot.
So we're being generous with that?
With that amount of signs, yes. If your ordinance is a
Okay, yeah.
I mean, for this agreement, this is really only about the distance from the road, right? The signs are going in the easement, and, you know, there's nothing we can change so quickly that would, that would, that would then make them not have to have that number of signs. And just as one, you know, quick point, there's the shops that we see along the front, which is what's now under development. There's two or three layers of sites, you know, in the shops, you know, that. So these businesses or these signs that will be advertising for businesses that are still all the same concrete, they're just not right up on the road.
So it'll be similar to like Chillerby, the ones that are like the gym and things like that, that are behind the front ones. They'll be more behind it.
Saying there's two existing, there's two of these that are existing right now. Other actually, there's one of these that are, I think most signs are there, but they're the ones, not that she called that, there where it's, you know, like, as Kev mentioned, it's, you know, there's eight or nine, you know, she was on the sign and everyone cares. But again, it all, it would be to say, well, here we won't, you know, keep them out of easement, and we don't have to come to you for anything. Of course, what that, you know, practicality does, that means that they're blocking the lot and everything else that's, you know, that's there.
But if they wanted to be, come back at this in a negative light, they could go and put sixteen on there, and the city would be required to permit them because that's where our ordinance is, correct? Like if they pulled them out of the easement?
We could not help them that.
You couldn't tell them no.
You know, the ordinance is that they have not, it's totally burned out. Even if we change our ordinance, I don't think.
Yeah.
It's that, you know, if the developer started, I mean, you know, there's your
They grandfathered it.
They based on when they got their application for their sign permit.
So it's not how they flattened it or, you know, like
But, you know, they got, and the city's working on changing the ordinance.
Yeah.
That's why I would have my, I think, my application.
Yeah.
Sixteen, so.
So they clear, if we approve this now, they can't come back and say, okay, we've got nine up front. We also go ahead and put another 12 behind either. They can't do both, right?
So let's say that, you know, the investment was on 105. Is there a chance that they may come to the decision, so they have on about 2854? Anybody want to sign there? Absolutely. I think that would seem, you know, doing that, because again, that's a bad way, or that's an access in there. Same with the Gulf Coast Springs project down by the sewer plant. Again, we're getting over tie-in. They're into the development, you know, geologically that they would want that. Those utility easements already exist, you know, in the same way that they do on 105. So there's a, there's a possibility that they would come back and say, hey, we've, you know, been on the development for two years. We're ready to build out of that pad sites that have access on side roads. We'd like to add the signs. I can't, I don't think so. We'd never come back and say that they would like to add signs.
But with this specific plan that they've given us, with the feet measurements marked apart, by giving them the go-ahead on these additional five, there's no way they could come back later and say, we want to do a full sixteen.
Right, right.
We lock them in on nine, they can't go anymore, correct? Because
The way they space those, that's where no longer, no more left for coming into the holes. A lot of their fronts do, to be fair, that sixteen number, also, it, you know, includes the entire front. You know, in between Chick-fil-A and CBS, obviously there's a creep there, you know, the front, maybe a sign down, you know, and a group on, but
So that helps us.
Right. It takes like a little bit of the front. And, you know, the one to five, the one minus five, you know, it's certain flexible in terms of these larger size, but you know, you get to a smaller site and, you know, if, you know, your smaller partials, your long two-figure partials have 150, 200 feet of frontage, you know, I think that's more of what this ordinance was, you know, designed for smaller size, not taking into account someone that had on the last quarter of 105, don't have to have.
All right. Well, our question number two, if the city has done work, we accidentally knock off 511, not to be rude, but
But are we setting a precedence here, though, for the other side of the highway? Because we still have the other side of the highway that's yet to be developed.
And that's why we need to take a look at all of our ordinances. I think that they're outdated, and there's definitely, I think I sent a memo this week about it. Just really need to take a look at the ordinances where we need some bite, we need some bite. I just like to make sure our town stays charming, right? And so, and not a big long LED sign. Or a lit up sign. And fortunately, this is on your way out of town, or out of our city limits, so there's a plus there.
There are a number of businesses in there. I don't sound like that, but there's going to be a number of businesses in the shops. It's, you know, I didn't feel like it was, I think we're asking for some kind of way to, you know, what they need or, you know.
Oh, I don't think they're trying to take advantage at all. It just
Does this include the property for Autozone as well, or no? This is all the way up to Autozone, correct?
No.
Okay. That's what I thought. Well, I'll make a motion that we accept, let me read this correctly, sorry, that we approve the amendment conditional upon receiving the executive document from the developer. Can we add a caveat to limit to no more than these nine total signs?
We can redo the agreement, just say, you know, it
I mean, I don't want to lessen it. Like if they want to do less, great, but we want to make sure they understand that this is
This is it.
This is it.
But we could also go over the message to the developer. The call council has said if they accept this agreement, they will not entertain additional signs of property.
But then does that allow them to go ahead and put up signs outside, outside of the easement, and then they could have
Sixteen.
A secondary row of signs if
They would be able to have, as long as it can meet the other ordinances, we still have the distance between.
It wouldn't meet the other ordinances because of the spacing on these.
And depending on how they locate it, they could locate such that they almost limit, you know, they almost all prevent additional signs from locating.
Right. Again, on Ebus Street, you want to thought they've kind of locked themselves out of adding any signs there because of the, because of the way that it looks out.
It looks like the biggest distance is like 162 feet between the, the five is the point between two signs. So even if you take that and divide it in half, you're looking at like 81 feet. That, the minimum is 125. So with this lock-in, they've locked themselves out of placing other signs.
Again, the two questions that I see that they might come back will be on Gulf Coast Spring Drive and maybe on 2854 if it was, you know, and to advertise to people that they can turn and they're to access the business.
So the motion was to approve the amendment conditional upon receiving the executed document from the developer? I'll second that.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the amendment conditional upon receiving the executed document from the developer. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of approving the amendment conditional upon receiving the executed document from the developer, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will approve the amendment conditional upon receiving the executed document from the developer. Item number six on your agenda, consideration of possible action regarding a variance request to the vegetative setback required, part requirements of Section 78-162A of the City Ordinance of Ordin, City Code of Ordinants. This is for Commercial Reserve D and Town Creek Crossing, Section 1, as submitted by Lefebvre Development Inc.
In this case, the developer is requesting a variance on the expectation that a departure from the text of the subdivision ordinance will allow for greater clearance to the spirit of the ordinance. In this particular case, we're talking about the 25-foot vegetative setback from a commercial property, but in residential properties. And while the term is vegetative setback, that includes, you know, grass. So it's not necessarily that the developer has to buy an extensive amount of trees to block the view, although that would probably be preferable on the residential end. Why, the reason we feel and staff supports the passage of this is, they're looking to transfer the vegetative setbacks to that 25 feet, will not be on the developer's property, will be on the residential end of the property. The primary reason for this is this particular property has an elevation drop that would make it more difficult to be maintained on the part of the commercial end. And, you know, and I concur also with that if that was in the hands of the residential property putting it, they could choose to put the vegetation in there that they felt smoothly shielded down from the nearby commercial property. If one resident felt that was trees or shrubs, or just the additional use of the grass property for the dogs to run around in the fence yard, they have that option. And, you know, I believe that's, you know, probably much greater than the spirit of it, subdivision ordinance, which can't just require the commercial owner has to give property to the nearby residential. And the back setback was put there to give above and for, yeah. And I believe we also have an engineer and developer representative here for additional questions, counsel.
Are there any unforeseen issues as far as the home's resale value later and not passing some kind of a city ordinance, or code, or inspection that we then transfer to the property owner because we have an ordinance that restricts this, and now we're giving a special amendment or addendum to this?
Counsel always has the ability to grant the variance, which then carries through with that property. I think there is a byproduct to this, is that the, is that the persons buying the residential property actually get a larger loss.
Yeah.
And certainly that is beneficial to them. I think a byproduct that is potentially beneficial to both the city and to the residents there is that, you know, there may be less incentive upon business owners or the business owner to properly maintain the vegetative setback as much as it would be in the incentive of the residents there within the property. And I'm not saying that why we have a problem with that, but I think that residents are greater, will have a greater interest in taking care of that property and maintaining the site location, you know, doesn't matter.
I think my question was more towards resale value. So let's say that the initial person comes in and they've got the developer who got all this approved. Well, then they want to add on to their home, and they have to come back to the city for a permit. Their home no longer meets what the code is. Are we going to have somewhere in record so that they aren't going to be penalized on the fact that we're giving a
Well, I'm not sure how you mean that their home doesn't meet what the code is. Which are
The vegetative setback of 25 feet.
Well, this variance will be on record. I mean, we could go back and
Since it applies to the commercial property, you, you won't have any negative effect on this.
I just, yeah, I was just worried about the homeowner, the resale value, and what it looks like loop to loop from one person to the other if we lose this connection piece.
We're in the 21st century, we should be
I know. You say that, but I hope you're right.
I'm okay with it. I mean
Yeah. I think it'll be a great benefit to have extra space in the homeowners. Plus, it's cheaper for the developer because they don't have to maintain the roadway.
And they don't have to pay, well, it's cheaper for the commercial, too, paying for that additional commercial price for the, for the lot.
I'll make a motion, sorry, that we consider the information and approve the variance request.
Second. Let's move and second that we consider the information and approve the variance request. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of considering and approving the variance request, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will approve the variance request. There's nothing on the agenda this evening for executive session. We do have counsel inquiry, and I know that Richard Tram has a few things on his list to update us on.
Just to kind of break us off the attention of counsel, we'll be looking in the next month to get more formal looking photos of city council for posting on the website. And so we'll be sending, they'll be sending out emails, I say the, probably the city secretary. They're sending out some emails to more important that. I just ask that you keep an eye on for those. And also, we want to let everyone know, 10 a.m. next Tuesday, June 15th, I believe, we'll be doing a dedication ceremony to an area of the Cedar Breck Park that we, that was formally redesigned with an area off of, off of the walking trail. There's park benches and resting area. This is going to be dedicated to both Lonnie and Lake Somme Clover, for, you know, all the work they've done over many years. A lot of it directly for Cedar Breck Park, but their work for the city really goes beyond just Cedar Breck Park. And so we're really having a short ceremony for that, to, to give it 10 a.m. next Tuesday for anyone who may be available to take that. I'd also like to thank everyone, the city council and the mayor, for all of you completing the site on Saturday. We're chasing down a couple, NBC and Atlanta, so many members, but, you know, everyone in this body has completed that. Thank you very much. And just one quick reminder, I mentioned earlier, we'll be posting publicly for the Lake Somme subdivision that's now open. Those applications from the public should be directed to the city secretary. And once verified, that's meeting the minimum qualifications for office, all the qualified applicants will be presented to the city council. That's all the announcements I have.
I've got one. That's okay. Speaking of the signs, I would like to revisit that at some point, obviously, because we're growing. This is continuing to, you know, be coming up, obviously. But is there something on the record where we also have a minimum requirement of sign maintenance? For example, it drives me nuts. You drive up 149, and you see Phil's Roadhouse. Half their sign's been broken off for how many years? You know, you're looking at that thing, the signs have to be in compliance, but they've also got to look good, right? Is there any requirement like that at all?
Or past elections that are old, those come signs too?
Well, I know with regard
Let's get everything current.
With regards to some license question, answers that, yes. I'm less certain about political signs, but, sorry, we have to turn to her.
Well, they're supposed to be down within like 45 days, aren't they? I thought.
Well
Okay.
That subject is of debate because of the constitutional protection to political free speech.
Okay.
You got to be careful, but we can take it with that.
There, it was a real estate sign underneath the original form was a real estate sign. Is there any kind of ordinance that said you take down a real estate sign in a certain amount of time? I don't know. I think our down I think our downtown sign ordinance needs to be looked at too.
But while we're, then, if we're going to do a wholesale look into the sign ordinance, we can also look into seeing if we can address the other additions too.
Yeah. I think it'd be good, it's just going to continue to, you know, grow, which is great.
And you're right, once they start to follow what you're there, they don't just automatically do that.
I've had roused through your sign ordinance and, you know, without really giving it too much thought, it just, there were parts of it to me that seemed ambiguous and maybe not as clear as they should be. So, so I do think there's a room for some improvement.
Would P and Z look at it first and then bring it to council, or is council in charge of the sign ordinance?
Typically, council's in charge of sign.
Good, good, thank you.
I bet some signs are disrepair, again, I'm just using Phil's as an example. I don't know what the rules are, or if she was, I'm sure she doesn't like having a messed-up looking sign. But is there a danger where she wants to fix it, then she has to change and knock the whole sign down and then rebuild it into with the current number? Obviously, that sign would be in compliance with today's ordinance, right?
Right. Any ordinance today will have to meet what their today standards are. Without one executive on that sign that's already put there, I don't know what the standards are.
Gotcha, okay. Okay, it's things like that, when you're driving in town, you want to see nice.
And for instance, if, if we do say in a month or two, the major changes that's been discussed in the sign ordinance, you know, these signs that have been put up in the last year, one of the, one day, they will be rented, they will end up having the need to meet a future requirement if they have major.
I'd definitely like to look at that soon, if again.
And there's some certainly, you know, staff and the city attorney can work on, put some back to the city council.
Thank you.
Just for me? I have a, just a clarification thing, because I've heard the same thing about concerns about, well, we don't want to be like the old 1960s used to be and that type of thing. But isn't the matter really clutter? And, and a lot of instances, it's the combination of signs and foliage. And the foliage needs to be concern, a concern, am I right? I mean, because if you have clean signs, well-maintained, if I'm, if I'm running a business, that's what I want. But what I don't want is some of the things that I don't want to go to Woodlands for. I can't find the signs until I've gone a block past. Is that what y'all are hearing more? Is it clutter issue, or is it, is it a cleanliness, uniformity issue? I'm just checking for my own. Or is it a combination?
Like if you look at what you said, I see, I mean, their signs are all up, down, this way, that way, at least we've got some kind of organization behind it. But.
But I feel like it's a foliage issue. Like in the Woodlands, you know, their foliage is all around their signs. The Shops of Towns Creek, there's a line of foliage and then the signs are in front of it.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I mean, that would be my concern.
Thinking specifically of?
Well, like I say, when you, Autozone to me looks clean. I mean, it's monument, as you say, if there's uniformity, even with some bushes and what, we could avoid some clutter. So that's what I'm, is that what I'm kind of, because to me, that's what it is.
Are we requiring any green, any greenery or bushes? I know we had a discussion with the insurance company, they were pushing, so are we, is that happening on those signs? That 105? Or is there anything that says that they need to do that? I guess it's my question.
We do have an ordinance related to a certain amount of tree cover. We don't have a specific ordinance that says you need to have bushes around the signs.
So they were doing that as a bonus? Okay.
There's a, one, I can think of one particular case, like our Pizza Shop is, theirs is not a true monument sign, and so they have bushes that were placed at the bottom to give the, give the look of a monument sign. You know, that's not, that is not a path I would recommend the City going. I would recommend them actually having a monument sign. I am a supporter of having, you know, the foliage around there and provide a better look, you know, and, you know, it's something we can discuss with the attorney, it's something that we co-laborate or should consider as well.
But these signs we just approved aren't true monument signs either, they're on one singular post. They're not like on the ground like.
Yeah, there's a skirting that goes down, which you see there, it's a structure.
Okay.
And then they can do that, they can either be a brick or stone all the way down all sides, or that can be a skirt or structure.
It'd be lovely to throw out bluebonnet seeds and have bluebonnets all down.
Well, I mean, that's, that's, that's my deal if we're given direction of planning and zoning and going forward. We want consumers and businesses with visible signs. I mean, I love foliage, no problem with foliage, but let's make sure we, I mean, the whole point, let's get people to where they can shop and enjoy their experience in the best interest of the consumer and the business owners. And so that's what I would like to see, planning and zoning and going forward.
Chief, if you see Sarah throwing stuff out while she's walking, it's not trash, so don't ticket her, she's just throwing seeds. Some bluebonnets here and some bluebonnets there.
As part of that conversation, when we talk about, you know, the signs again, I also want to make sure that when we have existing businesses that probably need a lot of help with their signage, yeah, I definitely want to see if there's a way that we could maybe offer some sort of assistance if they need it anyway.
Right.
Is that the role of the city though, is to?
Or NEDC maybe if they request? I don't know, is it?
I mean, if, if I've got my business and I've paid to maintain my sign, and you have a business and you don't pay to maintain your sign, why should the city help you? Why, they should help me then too.
Well, one thing, one thing about NEDC is spending money is, their money has to be focused towards, you know, economic development. And so, you know, there, there was a sign, there was a sign grant request that went to them earlier this year, and part of the question based around that was, you know, they were, they were looking for a sign that would cover multiple businesses, and so there was an economic element to that. You know, if, you know, as I did some research on that one, I saw, you know, if, you know, there's a difference between replacing a sign for something that's existing versus adding a sign for something that's a growth of the city. And there may be a middle ground where you're replacing or enlarging existing signs for growth of a business, but that's different than just replacing a sign.
Yeah, yeah.
And for a business that stays there. The, you know, the deeper I get into reading those regulations, it just is a dark hole that you can deeper and deeper in, a lot of gray area, but there is some hard black and white. And the hard black and white part of them, NEDC's spending funds is economic development.
Thanks, I understand. Okay. Very cool. Anybody else? I'd like to move that we adjourn, Mayor.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that we adjourn this meeting. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. At 6:38 PM, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you. Thank you all for attending.
For Christmas, I'm buying you a stack of bluebonnet seeds and. If you see them, I'm buying them everywhere, we're going to know where you put them.